Two forty-six.
The twelve hundred account was one million, six hundred and fifty thousand, oh ninety-eight?
Correct.
The twelve oh five stayed at thirty-seven thousand, eight hundred and fifty.
Yeah, eight oh five.
Eight oh five, sorry. Thirty-seven thousand, eight oh five.
Correct.
Did you skip twelve hundred?
Nope. The twelve eighty account was, the enrichment was one ninety-one, four forty-seven.
Correct.
Co-curricula, fourteen-ten account was forty-two thousand, four hundred and twenty-seven dollars.
Yep.
Fourteen-twenty athletics, fifty-two thousand, two hundred and fourteen dollars.
Correct.
Summer school, fourteen-thirty was sixteen thousand, four hundred and twelve dollars and fifteen cents.
Correct.
Right?
Yep.
Guidance, twenty-one-twenty was two hundred and eighteen thousand and eighteen dollars. That's where I didn't reduce, right?
Right, two fifteen, two hundred and fifteen thousand, one hundred and twelve dollars and eighty-three cents.
Okay. Health services was eighty-nine thousand, nine hundred and thirty-two dollars and six cents.
Correct.
Speech, a hundred and ten, seven forty-six.
Correct. Oh, seven forty-three.
Or forty-three, sorry. The twenty-two-ten, seventy-two thousand, eight hundred and twenty-six dollars.
Correct.
Twenty-two-twenty, library and media, a hundred and twenty thousand, four hundred and three dollars.
Correct.
School board was fifty-three-ten, or fifty-three thousand, ten dollars.
Correct.
S.A.U. is two hundred and thirty-one thousand, one hundred and ninety-four.
Correct.
Principal's office, three hundred and fifty-one thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars and seventy-five cents.
Correct.
Business services, a hundred and sixteen thousand, seven hundred and sixty-two dollars.
Correct.
Building maintenance, seven hundred and ninety-nine thousand, two hundred and thirty-six dollars and fifty-nine cents.
Ninety-nine cents, but sure.
Ninety-nine cents, okay. Basic transportation contract, three hundred and sixty-four dollars, excuse me, three hundred and sixty-four thousand, six hundred and one dollars.
Correct.
Twenty-seven-twenty-two, special ed transportation, a hundred and seventy-one thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars.
Correct.
And transportation athletics, thirteen thousand, seven hundred and sixty-one dollars.
Correct.
And then fields trips was eleven thousand, five hundred dollars.
Correct.
What you get, Lauren?
I'm still going.
I was off by that top number. I hadn't taken.
Which was three hundred and ninety-five dollars. Difference we were.
Okay, all right.
That's the number I got.
Okay.
Did you get it?
Do you have a number?
I'm waiting for Lauren. I was reading them off.
Seven thousand.
I think we have it, but.
Eight-one-six, eight-three-six-seven? Is that right, Mike?
I don't think so.
Eight-one-three-four, or eight, one hundred and thirty-four thousand, three hundred and forty-eight dollars and sixty cents? No?
I got eight million, one thirty-six, eight fifty-nine.
I'm not sure if I have this one right. It's the number for.
Principal's office. Three fifty-one, seven fifty point seven-five.
Seven fifty point seven-five.
I just put a.
Hi. Eight million, one hundred and thirty-six thousand, eight hundred and fifty-eight dollars and sixty cents?
Bingo. Close enough, off thirty cents. I don't.
All right, what do you got, Mike?
The material.
Eight million, one hundred and thirty-six, eight million, one hundred and thirty-six thousand, eight hundred and fifty-eight dollars and sixty cents.
That's the subtotal.
That's the subtotal, yep. All right, and then Prospect Mountain, twenty-three-twenty? Is, uh... Is this, uh... This is Delinda. Is this what the school board recommended, or is this what the Alton and Bonstead J.M.A. reduced that by?
Which number, which twenty are you looking at?
That's the J.M.A. number.
The twenty-three-twenty Prospect Mountain High School.
Which document are you looking at?
You've got, uh, you've got, I guess you have three million, three hundred and thirty thousand, six hundred and seventy-four dollars. Is the Alton share? Is that correct?
I don't think I have it in there whatsoever.
I'm looking at, I don't see that. This sheet right here.
No.
Did you just carry over the last year's number there?
No, I have a document from the business administrator. Unless you guys have a different sheet than I have, I don't have a number.
That's...
Ain't paid very well, I'll tell you that.
So there's no number from the budget committee?
I...
What did they send you?
I have an official email from Chuck Stewart, the business administrator at Prospect Mountain High School, that stated the Prospect Mountain School Board at its meeting of twelve-twenty, two thousand and eleven, voted for a bottom-line budget of six million, eight hundred and ninety-nine thousand, seven hundred and fifty-one dollars. The percentage breakdown apportionment will be, Alton at fifty-two point seven percent is three million, six hundred, thirty-six thousand, one hundred and sixty-nine dollars.
So now my question to you is, is, did you take the J.M.A. Budget Committee's recommendation to reduce that budget? Or did you not take any of their recommendations?
You did take.
All of them?
Not all of them.
Which ones?
She's got it by email, homie. It's not in here. So I don't know how we can vote on it. Ain't in here, right?
You tell me what they were, I'll tell you what we did.
All right.
There's approximately twenty-two recommendations from the J.M.A. Budget Committee.
We did some of the similar ones that we did this, um... I don't know, all twenty-two?
No, I'm trying to find my, uh...
The J.M.A. recommended a hundred and twenty-seven thousand, four hundred and sixteen dollars in reductions. How much did the school board recommend, if any?
I don't know that number off the top of my head. Yeah, I don't know that number off the top of my head. I'm sorry.
So we can't vote on it?
I know we made some reductions, but.
You have other members of the school board here. Do you want to ask them?
I don't think anybody's going to know that number off the top of their head.
So wait a minute. The number. Hey, wait a minute. The number, wait a minute. Kathy, the number you gave me was six billion, eight hundred and ninety-nine thousand, seven fifty-one?
That's correct, based on the Prospect.
In between the two, J.M.A. and Alton, Budget Committee recommended a bottom-line budget of six million, eight hundred and forty-two thousand, nine hundred and ninety-one dollars. I'm just, that's.
All right.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
Okay, um, the bottom-line budget of six million, four hundred and eighty-two thousand, nine hundred and ninety-one dollars?
Eight hundred and forty.
Eight forty-two is what I had.
You have eight forty-two?
Yeah.
So ninety-nine, seven fifty-one.
Mike?
So we made fifty-seven.
We can't vote on this anyways. I mean, you can't take and vote on an email.
Well, we haven't voted on what we were going to give to the high school yet. We can reduce that line if we want to when we vote.
But we've got to have it on a page or something. We can't vote on, we can't cut an email.
No, we, we can, we can, we can recommend not to fund that line to the full. Can recommend that. Right, but that line, we can vote to recommend that we're only going to fund so much.
Could you say the number again of what the?
Joint Committees?
Yeah.
The Joint Committees had six million, eight hundred and forty-two thousand, nine hundred and ninety-one dollars.
Six, eight, four, two.
Nine, nine, one.
Nine, nine, one. And what is the percentage? Fifty-two?
Fifty-two point seven.
That's correct.
Is that the number that you just read, though?
No.
No, 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 no.
Chuck, it's different.
That's correct.
The school board recommended something different.
Six, eight, nine, nine, seven, five, one.
So what's fifty-two point seven, so we can put a number in there? He's doing it. I think Lauren's doing it.
Get three, six, zero, six, two, five, six.
Steve, can I ask you a question for a moment? The Joint Budget Committee, does it have the same exact powers, yeah, as the Alton Budget Committee?
No, no, we're just advisory.
Okay.
We're just, we're just advisory, but.
We can recommend that line to be funded, or not funded.
However, when you make that recommendation here at the Alton Budget Committee.
It's got to come from somewhere else.
It will come out of the Alton Central School budget, and I want that very clear to members of the public here, that anything that you cut out of the Prospect Mountain budget comes out of the Alton Central School students.
We have to fully fund what the Prospect Mountain Board approves. We have to gross appropriate that number.
But there's only, the only way the school board's going to start to look at the Budget Committee, the J.M.A. Budget Committee, is to cut that line. Whether it comes out of this school or not, I mean, it wasn't like they cut that budget in half. They didn't cut a lot out of that budget. And I think the school board needs to take a hard look at it because the school board is a little hoopy here on their spending.
The, um, okay, okay, I chaired the J.M.A. Budget Committee. And we spent, I'm going to guess, five days and a significant amount of hours going over the budget on a line-by-line basis. Both Bonstead and Alton agreed to reduce the J.M.A. budget originally by a hundred and fifty thousand, six hundred and sixteen dollars. And after the, after the public hearing, we, we do, we put back some dollars and reduced it by a hundred and twenty-seven thousand, four hundred and sixteen dollars. Okay, so the simple question is this. That was our duty, okay, and which is, you know, specified in the J.M.A. agreement. We also have a duty to come back to the Alton Budget Committee and tell the Budget Committee, these are the cuts that were, the reductions, our additions, that were recommended by the J.M.A.
Correct.
And at that point, the Alton Budget Committee votes to recommend or not recommend that Prospect Mountain High School number, the fifty-two, or the fifty-two percent that we have to pay, are some alternative number. If we cannot come back and recommend an alternative number, will somebody tell me why we showed up at all?
That's part of the J.M.A.
Yeah, I mean, why did we have the, why did we have the meetings, right? If we cannot come here, recommend, you know, to the Budget Committee, the reductions on a line-by-line basis, and defend it, of course, and then have the Alton Budget Committee, you know, vote to either go along with the hundred and twenty-seven thousand, or our percentage of the hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars reductions are not?
I understand that, and that happens in a different venue.
Right.
And that money comes directly out of the students at Alton Central School.
And it also, and also as well as Bonstead, if they vote the same way as well?
Yes.
Sure, that's the way it was designed.
Hi. So what did you come up with for that number with fifty-two point seven percent?
Three, six, zero, six, two, five, six.
So sixty cents?
No, two five six.
Oh, two five six.
Twenty-nine thousand, nine hundred and thirteen dollars difference.
So three million, six hundred and six thousand, two hundred and fifty-six dollars?
What I got.
Yep, I got that too.
Can you repeat?
That's Alton's share.
That's Alton's share for the Prospect Mountain High School. Three million, six hundred and six dollars to, three million, six hundred and six thousand, two hundred and fifty-six dollars.
Right. Twenty-nine thousand, nine hundred and thirteen dollars less than what the J.M.A. Board is emailing.
Yep.
My suggestion would be, is that, um, we go over, you know, I'll, I'll list out the individual reductions that were recommended by the Joint, by the Joint Budget Committee.
Can I get a?
And if hypothetically a hundred percent are agreed upon, the fifty-two point whatever, seven percent of a hundred and twenty-seven thousand, four hundred and sixteen dollars would be the recommended deduction, recommended deduction from the school board budget, which would be the recommended budget from the Budget Committee.
I don't think we need to go line by line.
Okay.
This is what three people from the Budget Committee recommended. I'm sure the rest of the Budget Committee would go along with it. Am I correct?
Yes.
So that's the number that we'll wind up using. Three million, six hundred and six thousand, two hundred and fifty-six thousand.
Mr. Chairman?
Is this a question where we have public input on this, just because?
Yeah, we're going to have public input on it.
Mr. Chairman, nor for, nor for there to be accurate public input, they really have to, you know, they have to know more than the gross number, what's coming, where it comes from.
We already had a public hearing on the high school budget.
Okay. Mike, what was your number?
That, 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 we already had that public hearing on that budget.
I understand.
Right? So if they wanted public input then, we didn't have anybody that really showed up for public input.
Correct, but this is just a line in the Alton budget at this point, so.
And that's, the recommendation the Budget Committee's recommending is three million, six hundred and six thousand, two hundred and fifty-six dollars in that line. We can take public input on that line. Any public input?
I guess what I want, can I speak?
Yeah, go ahead.
Just as somebody who's looking out for the interests of Alton Central School, it's really tough when we have the public hearing and we have this Prospect Mountain, these Prospect Mountain reductions. And I feel that our school and our district did a really good job at presenting a budget that was a significant, I'm asking Kathy for an approximate decrease from last year, and I know she doesn't like to do approximations, but, um, you know, we're coming in far below what we requested last year because we're being really conscientious, and I think we're trying to be really transparent about presenting exactly what we need. And it's tough for me, um, in a situation like this, when the other reductions are made, to know that even though we came in with a greatly reduced budget, that these cuts, because of Prospect Mountain High School, are going to come directly from Alton Central School students.
Well, I think that's where you should go to the Board and explain to them about that budget. And why is it coming out of your budget when they are not doing their job?
In fact, are there not current Board members who are part of the J.M.A. first of all?
This school board we have a problem with. They like to take every penny they can get their hands on.
I don't agree with you.
Well, I do.
All right, we don't need to.
And I think that it, it wasn't a big cut over in that system. It wasn't devastating or anything else. They were relatively small cuts. And I think that the school board could have listened to it instead of just putting it aside and saying, no, we really want to do our little pet projects.
Is, is it really fair for the J.M.A. to not have a second pair of eyes looking at them? That they effectively, if, if, if we, if we take your stance, and I understand that a hundred percent.
Yeah, it's not fair.
And we're not, we're not in the business of punishing Alton Central School. We're not, we're not. Okay, but that means they can come up with any budget they want, the school board. The Prospect Mountain School Board can come up with any budget they want. And because there's no set of eyes for a second opinion, that's what automatically goes into the Alton Central School budget, and it has to be passed, and it always has to be passed for the exact same reason. The reason is, it'll come out of the Alton Central School. I didn't, we didn't create the rules. All we're doing is going by the rules.
I also find it very interesting, with the millions of dollars in these budgets, ultimately, it always falls on the shoulders of the children. We never, ever, ever say it'll affect administration, it'll never affect transportation, it'll never affect something that isn't going to be. It's always the children.
And that's because absolutely everything that's in place in the district is in place for the children.
No, that's because, that's where you get the most reaction out of the people, is when you say it's coming out of the children.
All right, that's enough from the Budget Committee. Well, we're going to go public input. We'll wait. We'll go public input. Just step up and announce your name and the mic.
My name is Christine Heike, um, and I have three children, very young. I did not go to the Prospect Mountain deliberative session. I don't have high school children. I had heard through the grapevine that there were cuts. They were made, they're very drastic up there, but I did not get the opportunity to go up myself because my interest is here, in my small children in the elementary school. And I know there are parents here that are interested in their small children and their elementary school. You have lots and lots of meetings. I, my hat's off to you that you go to all of these, but many of us focus on where our kids are and where we are now, so I think we would like to know. I've heard that all server maintenance has been wiped clean from the high school, so I would like to know if that was in fact something true. So could you please actually go line by line and let us know?
Sure.
What you are doing, because I care about my kids, and I want money for my children at the central school, and I don't want it to go to the high school. And that's my bottom line.
Six point eight million dollar budget at the high school. We effectively cut a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. We tried to cut a hundred and fifty. And you think a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars from a six point eight million dollar budget is a drastic cut? I have a problem with that definition.
Hey, Steve, Steve actually has the line by lines. He can, he can do them.
Steve, do we have, Mark, do we have access to what the school board agreed to on the cuts? Because it looks like about fifty, about fifty percent of the recommendations were taken, the other fifty percent were not. It'd be really good to know which of the fifty percent were not.
Does somebody have them from the school board?
No.
Nobody has them from the school board? You have them?
Chris, do you have them?
You have them? If we, if we, yes, we would love them, please.
Do you want me to go over the cuts first?
Steve will go over the cuts that they did first. This is at the high school level.
Okay, first of all, out of the, um, out of the general education account, we reduced dues and fees by two hundred and seventy dollars. We did that across the board for dues and fees that were not directly geared towards the student, but for professional development of the individual teacher, our professional, that effectively, that effectively increased their resume. That's all they did. So anything that effectively was for the benefit of just the professional, we reduced. So we did not reduce all dues and fees. We were very specific in which ones we chose. We reduced, we made a cut of one thousand, three hundred and sixty-five dollars for our euphonium. That's a tuba, okay? We reduced computers, twenty-seven thousand, three hundred dollars. The reason is, there was a, there was a four-year, um, replacement plan, and it was decided that, based on the state of technology, a five-year replacement plan would make a lot of economic sense in this environment. Service, servers and wireless, wireless was reduced, seven thousand, three fifty-six. One of the board members was, is the, um, is the main supervisor for servers in Concord, in the state of New Hampshire. Anyways, that was his job. He went through a long explanation of what it takes, what it means to keep a server, maintain it, and what the, and what the age limit is on a server. So this wasn't done just off the top of our heads. An increase of a thousand dollars was reduced for maintenance because the school is getting old, for phones and bells because the stu, the, um, school is getting older. A two percent raise increase for special ed was reduced, and that was a feeling across the board in terms of raises. On the twenty-one-twenty, again, fees and dues were reduced, a thousand, seventy dollars. Improvement of instruction was reduced, two thousand, two hundred and fifty, eliminating one motivational speaker. Library and media were reduced, nine thousand, eight thirty-five. I'm trying to think of why. I'm going to guess it's probably level funded, but I'm not sure off the top of my head. Oh, I'm sorry, I got the breakdown. Seven thousand, one hundred and fifteen dollars was for new projectors, two hundred and twenty dollars for dues and fees, and twenty-five hundred dollars for books. Distanced learning, there was a reduction of six thousand dollars for Mandarin Chinese. An increase of vice president's salary of fifty-five hundred dollars was reduced because that was to be used as a recruiting tool, not for somebody who is actually there. Dues and fees were, again, were reduced, seventeen ninety-five, and food was reduced, two thousand, out of the principal's budget. Not for the kids. And the building and maintenance, thirteen thousand dollars was, they, um, the school wanted to have a significant maintenance of the baseball field. We didn't think this was the appropriate time to do it. I think it was for irrigation. Fifteen thousand dollars was reduced in electricity account, eleven hundred and eighty-five dollars in the repair and maintenance account to make it level funded. Athletic transportation was reduced, thirteen hundred, to make it level funded from last year since you're on a continuing contract. That was essentially where a hundred and twenty-seven thousand, four hundred and sixteen dollars came from.
Well, I know with thirteen of the twenty-nine is, we put back in the baseball.
You did.
We did.
Yeah, okay.
So that's thirteen of the twenty-nine, so that means sixteen more. I couldn't tell you exactly where. I think the.
Hi.
Just letting Linda finish. You ready?
Yeah.
The Board unanimously approved to eliminate several items from the budget that the Joint Budget Committee recommended, and those items included. Budget Committee recommended, and those items included a euphonium, which I didn't know what that was until Steve said it a minute ago, for the general education account for $5,246 for servers, and $11,200 for computers in the 1140 technology account, $2,250 from the 2210 improvement of instruction account, $1,795 in the 1200 special education account that would have resulted in 2% raises, $6,000 in the distance learning 2224 account, $27,315 in the 2320 superintendence account for 2% raise, $13,000 for the field maintenance, and $1,185 in repairs and maintenance in the 2600 buildings maintenance account, and finally, $1,300 in the 2724 transportation for athletics account. So, what that boils down to is Alton's portion of those reductions that were accepted, and those were what was actually more than what was recommended by the JMA Finance Committee, they came forward that evening on the 20th of December with their recommendations to the board, the board actually cut more than what the JMA Finance Committee's recommendations were, by a difference of, I believe, about $20,000, and that's an estimate. But, Alton's portion of that is a $29,000 increase from the previous year, is all you're looking at for a difference. The bottom line of the two budgets, from what was adopted by the JMA Board, and the previous year's budget, again, is $29,913. To cut that difference from the Alton Central School budget, because the numbers weren't adopted by the JMA School Board, after consideration and after going above and beyond, the Finance Committee's recommendations and findings would be a punitive action, in my opinion, and would basically be holding a gun to the head of Alton Central. You've got Prospect Mountain, which is a CINNE and a DINNE, which means it's a school in need of improvement, and a district in need of improvement, you know, to cut funds from them, you know, there's a lot of things that the board did consider and did accept with no problem at all, there are some things, however, such as being able to have a ballgame on our own fields at that beautiful school, really needs, needs to be taken care of, and it's something that needs to be maintenance, I don't think a $29,000 increase from one year to the next is an inconsiderate increase.
How have we been irrigating them so far?
They have been irrigated, from what I understand, there's some issues with how the soil layers were put down, Loring might be able to speak to this a little bit more, because he's familiar with some of the issues that we had after construction, this isn't anything that's covered, this isn't anything that's covered on insurance after construction or anything like that, that's stuff that we have looked into. We've looked at every cost-effective way we have to try to fix those fields, bottom line is, there needs to be some maintenance done to them, and there needs to be some changes done to the top levels of them, that's something the business administrator from Prospect can address for you if you want, but quite frankly, this is stuff that the Budget Committee, when the JMA Budget Committee met, should have gone over and discussed at that time, and perhaps they have information from it, so Steve might, from their findings when they met. Thank you.
Yep.
Just looking at this yellow page, we go down to the Prospect Mountain High School, I see that the adopted budget in 2011-12 was 3365664.
Mm-hmm, yep.
Correct?
Yep.
This year, our portion, if we go along with the Joint Board, is 3606256. That's $240,592. You divide that by the 3365, that's a 7.15% increase.
Mm-hmm.
That's a 7% increase, I think Mrs. Heikel is correct. Now, you take our number, and you take the number from last year's actual in that same sheet, and we're decreasing the elementary school by 1%. 86498 by 8223356. The elementary is being cut 1%, and the high school is going up 7.1%, 0.15%?
I could address that actually quite easily. It's enrollment, it's, excuse me, I'm sorry Barbara, go ahead.
Wait a minute, let her speak.
I said, that is not something the Budget Committee can fix, it's a procedural, it's procedure that's in place.
The numbers are different.
It's, we have an increase in enrollment, we have a difference now, in the past, Barnstead, it's...
Oh, it's been 50/50 usually, and now we're paying more.
It's been almost 50/50, now it's like 52% is Alton, and 48% now is...
Percentage flip-flop, so that adds to the...
So, we're paying more.
We were 51 last year.
We were at about 48, 49 last year, now we're 52.
52 this year.
Yeah, and it's based on enrollment, but...
Well, the 1% change don't cause a 2, a 7% rise.
Last year.
We were 48 last year.
48, oh.
52 now.
So, this impacts us more than...
So, it, right, and that's, and it's because of the way, it's because of the way it's split out by student enrollment.
All right, then, so, what's the bottom line numbers then? What is the increase, without the percentage, what increase, bottom line of the 6, what's the increase in the 6899751?
That I don't have.
What was the number last year then, for the total? Because, that's an excellent point she made, you're cutting the elementary 1%, and the high school is going up 5 or 6 or 7%?
Mm-hmm.
I don't have anything on me to show me what...
How else can you stop the high school from overspending? There's no way to do it, because the day line automatically goes into the budget, unless there is a recommendation to change it.
Aye, Krista. So, your number for the percentage for Alton would be $3,635,756, is that correct?
Hang on one second.
Because I took our number and added 29.5?
Let me just double check it, hang on.
I'm just asking.
Our number plus 29913.
Yeah, 2913.
Yeah, that's what I've got.
So, what do you got?
From, $29,913 is the difference between...
Yes, our portion, yep.
Yeah, for our portion, because you've got to look at this by portion for each year, you know, there might be, the previous year, Barnstead saw a similar jump, and it's by student enrollment, it's split, if it was, you know, if we had 200 kids exactly from each district, it would be a 50/50 split, however, when you have more from one sending district than the other, your numbers are going to change.
Well, not counting the split, just the base number that each would work off of, what was the increase, what was last year's bottom...
See, I don't have the total prospect number on me.
I don't have last year's total prospect number, I mean, I can get that for you if you give me a few minutes, I can try to look it up.
If someone can go to Prospect's, I don't know if their website has the full budget.
Yeah, I can go to it right now.
No.
Wasn't it $6,894,028?
I don't want to guess. I'm not good at guessing.
You don't have a book?
Yeah, that's what I'm looking at.
You got the old book.
I've got the Prospect Mountain High School book.
Oh, you do? Ooh, kudos, okay. So, what was their total FY, what, FY12?
Well, I'm saying, this is what you guys adopted last year, right? $6,894,028?
Was it with eight?
That's what I'm asking.
But then they end up going to default, when we went to default?
Yeah, but Prospect's funded at 100% even with a contract.
Right, only, only Alton would have, only ACS would be impacted by a default budget. If we have a default budget, Prospect still gets exactly what they asked for.
How fair is that?
That's the way it is, and there's already been case law on this, there was...
By contractual obligation, that's been looked at one other time before.
Your frustration with this has been felt more than once, there was actually a case law on this a while back, and it was something actually that Pat Fuller was quite involved in.
So, the Prospect Mountain High School went up $4,000, the budget.
Total, overall, is that what you...
That's what I'm trying to find out.
It's $4,000, not 7%.
No, but all its portions going up 7%.
Right, and it's...
Yeah, but since Alton School Board members are part of the Prospect Mountain High School Board, right? Shouldn't the Alton School Board and the Barnstead School Board, right, understand that if the budget is too high, and there are cuts to be made, you people are on the same board, that it's gonna come out of the elementary school and the middle school, and it's never gonna come out of the high school? And why haven't you, since 2004 or 2005, put a stop to that?
But, Steve, if what Mark is saying is true, and the Prospect Mountain only went up by $4,000, what we're paying is the difference in the...
What we're paying is the difference in enrollment, that's...
The flip in the percentage.
We don't have control over that.
Right, there's more students...
And Alton does get hit because of that, but in the end, then, we have more kids up at the high school, so we have to pay for more of the services.
But, as a school board member, and you understand what the demographics are changing...
Who'd adjust it for the taxpayers?
You know the demographics are changing, because you know who's graduating from Alton.
Yeah, but if you're, if you're just increasing the budget by 4,000 at the high school, it's not like, I mean, what else can you, you know, prices go up, $4,000...
But, when everybody's struggling, you would think the school board would try to cut some of it, instead of putting irrigation in and stuff around these fields.
So, now's the time to do a baseball field and a tuba and whatever?
Well, let me tell you, the baseball field, we've only played two games on the home, two games on the home field.
No, the...
191 away games, that absolutely emphatically, we could not ever live without cutting one away game.
All right, the original high school budget, what they proposed was $7,012,000, and then it got reduced to the 6899751. So, public input? Okay. This is on the high school, right? Is this on the high school?
This is on the debate that's going on.
Okay.
Yes. Rebecca McKeller, I have two students at Alton Central School, one in kindergarten and one in second grade, I wanted to point out that cutting administration, transportation, professional development in a school district does affect the children, because you're affecting the quality of people that we can retain in the school, and you're affecting, and thus affecting the education of our children. So, don't pretend that it doesn't, because it does, because people will leave if we're not a competitive school district. Secondly, if you want to change the way that the budget is overseen, and how things are run, and we have two different unions, and et cetera, et cetera, then that's, this is not the time to do it, when you're gonna be affecting the kids of Alton Central School. There are better times to do this, not when you're going for a vote. And, thirdly, that there's a certain bottom line that you have to maintain in order to have the beautiful high school that we do. There's a certain amount of money that has, that goes into it, and things need to be maintained, to maintain the field right now is gonna cost X amount of dollars, to do it, a whole overhaul, because we didn't do the irrigation properly, is gonna cost a whole lot more in three, three, five years than it would right now to fix the problem. You've got to be proactive on these things, or it's gonna cost a lot more down the road.
Thank you. I've got another one.
My name is Steve Renner, I'm also a parent at Alton Central School of two successful children in the program, I think a few of the teachers would attest to that. First of all, it was very interesting to watch everyone appear with calculators for a very long time, but I'm pretty sure my second grader with paper and a pencil probably could have added up quicker and accurately.
Should have brought him along.
If it wasn't past their bedtime, I would be happy to do that. In terms of the comments made about it not affecting the children, as I sit here, and I have been to one other Budget Committee meeting, but I could also sit here and go line by line and tell you how each line of this budget would affect my children. Out of the 21 different categories that are listed here, I would say routinely, my kids probably use 17 of them, and I would be happy to go line by line and try my best to explain that, but there's already rumblings about how long this meeting is taking, and how far along we are. So, just to reiterate what the last person said, these do affect the kids, administration does affect the kids. My daughter loved having lunch with Mrs. Leggett this year, that she was gracious enough to take part of her day to spend with each of the kids in the second grade, it's fantastic, and it does loads for their enthusiasm, their desire to come to school every day, just as an example of some of the administrative costs, if you will, that we pay, that have an effect on the kids. And lastly, I wasn't aware to the extent of the situation of the Prospect Fields, but however, to go beyond that and speak as a community member, I participate in the Alton Youth League as a coach, I participate in the Alton Adult Softball Program, and for the last, since that school has been available, Alton Youth League and the Alton Adult Softball Program have been denied every year, use of that facility, because of the supposed problems and conditions of that field. So, it's not just a few high school baseball games that are affected by the quality of that field, there's those of us who would like to use that facility on a regular basis, both for other kids outside the school program, and as adults, and we're not able to. If we can, if we can make progress towards addressing these kinds of issues, it'll help our community, it'll help the students, and it'll bring people to Alton, if we can provide them with opportunities that, you know, give us some competitive edge, or at least balance the level of playing field a little bit.
Well, I think, they play, I go over and watch home games on those fields, so I think it's a matter of arguing with the school board to let the youth league use them.
Aye.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Because don't really irrigation then, it's under water.
Nope, don't.
So, what would be Alton's portion for the high school? What would that number be? At the 52.7% out of the $6,899,751?
It would be $3,636,169.
That's right.
Anything else on that line?
And am I correct that it would be .36% of the operating budget of 8199, I'm sorry, that number, 8136858?
3 tenths of 1% of the Alton Central School budget, that's the total.
Well, that's, unless somebody, we can get the second grader up here to do the math, that's what I get.
If the, if this passes, and it passes in Barnstead, these cuts, then the JMA Board can rethink their budget, can't they?
No, because you can't change it after night, can you?
Yeah, they can. After the budget's passed, and if Barnstead says they cut the same amount as Alton does, then that Joint Board can go back and re-figure their budget.
Yeah, two years ago, there was a petition article to give the budget, the JMA Budget Committee, equal authority as the Budget Committee of each individual town, and the people turned it down, because they don't want, they don't want that oversight.
So, if they did that, if you redo your budget in the JMA, it won't affect the elementary?
Right, that's right.
And, I think if you look at these numbers too, I see that in the budget in 2010-11 on this yellow sheet, 3356, the actual was 3309, 234, so you had what? Over $30,000 right there, for savings?
Mm-hmm.
What you spent from what you asked for? So, there is some room there in past history.
Well, I'm sure part of that too is the, we always have that professional development line, that that's what we were trying to build up with the Warren article that we have, to have it over on the side, because if you have to contractually budget for it, contractually budget for it every year, that's why we wanted it over there, and then we'll just replenish that, that's, I don't know, at least $30,000.
Were you gonna buy a new telephone system with a surplus at all?
No.
No?
No, that's not surplus, that's E-rate. That's E-rate, it's not surplus.
You ready?
Mm-hmm.
So, then we have Capital Reserve Federal Projects of $100,000, Food Service, $245,383, Capital Projects, we just left at a dollar. And then we'd have to vote on what we're gonna decide in our next meeting, bottom line.
For what, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, for what?
In our next meeting, we'll have to vote for our bottom line.
Bottom line, okay.
Yep.
I thought you said bond something.
No.
Time is it, it's only quarter to eight.
So, now it's Warren articles? Correct? Did any of these Warren articles change since... Did any of these Warren articles change since when we took our temporary vote?
I shouldn't really speak to those.
I know we took two out, you have a contract, teachers' contract.
So, I've got to start with Article Two, correct?
Article Two.
Yep.
That's the same.
All right, to determine the fixed salaries of the school board and the compensation of any other officer or agent of the district as follows, moderator, two hundred per meeting, clerk, two hundred per meeting, treasurer, two thousand, chairman of the school board, twenty-one hundred, school board members, two thousand. The cost of these items are included in the operating budget.
And the school, and the Budget Committee approved that.
Are we voting on these now, Mike?
Or we did it, no, we just did a temporary vote, and we did pass that. Article Three, see if the school district will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of eighteen million dollars, eighteen million eight, eight hundred thousand, six hundred and fifteen dollars, for renovations, reconstruction, repairs, and construction in addition to the Alton Central School, and for furnishing and equipping the school, and to authorize the issuance of not more than eighteen million forty-two thousand dollars of bonds or notes in accordance with the provision of the Mississippi Finance Act, RSA thirty-three, and to authorize the school board to issue and negotiate such bonds or notes, and to determine the rate of interest thereon, furthermore, to authorize a withdrawal of nineteen thousand eight hundred and thirty-two dollars and twenty cents from the water heater capital reserve fund, two hundred and thirty-nine thousand eleven dollars and thirty-three cents from the fire suppression capital reserve fund, twenty-five thousand seven hundred and forty-one dollars and twenty-two cents from the security safety expendable trust fund, four hundred and forty-six dollars and eighteen cents from the electrical services upgrade expendable trust fund, thirty-one thousand one hundred and three dollars and fifty-two cents from the bathroom refurbishment expendable trust fund, one million eight hundred and thirty-nine thousand and twenty-three cents from the windows replacement expendable trust fund, four hundred and forty thousand six hundred and sixty, what?
That wasn't one million.
Or what? Oh, sorry.
For the bathroom.
One thousand eight hundred and thirty-nine dollars and twenty-three cents from the windows replacement expendable trust fund, four hundred and forty thousand six hundred and sixty-six dollars and six cents from the buildings and grounds expendable trust fund, with the balance of eighteen million forty-two thousand dollars and no cents, and further to raise and appropriate an additional sum of four hundred and ten thousand nine hundred and fifty-six dollars and sixty-seven cents for the first year's interest payment on the bond. I'm sure there's going to be public input on this one. The, there was no school board rep going over this Warren article when it was presented to the Budget Committee, so the Budget Committee turned it down. Or the preliminary turned it down, yeah, sorry. Hi, any public input on that one? Well, we preliminary turned it down, there was no school board rep here when the...
We haven't had a school board rep.
Warren article was presented to us.
Nobody bothered, they didn't bother to show up to defend their article.
There was nobody from the school district here at all that could answer any questions?
Hasn't been for the last...
The school board, the school, no, nobody.
Nobody from the school district, that's my question.
Not elected officials. I said, "school board." There was nobody here from the school board.
Oh, there was nobody here. Nobody has been, none of the school boards been here for a few minutes, few meetings.
This is, again, my name is Steve Renner, this is, I'm also a member of the Alton Buildings and Grounds Committee, and I was here at that meeting, and I did offer public input.
Right.
I know I'm not an elected official, so I couldn't, but there were also, Mr. Parker and I were here, we're both members of the Buildings and Grounds Committee, there were people here who could have addressed questions in an unofficial capacity, I guess you could say. So, just to make that clear, because since that time, in anything that's been in the local media, there has been no reference to either Mr. Parker or I attending that meeting and being present, for at least for portions of it, to represent the work that we've done, in addition to people from the SAU office who were also here who could have addressed those issues. Aside from that...
You should have got up and spoke for it.
I did, I most certainly did, I don't recall seeing you here at that meeting.
I was probably in the hospital.
So, again, to speak as a parent, I feel that moving forward with this project is certainly valuable. I feel that there are a lot of reasons for why it is a good time to move forward with this project. Yes, it's a lot of money, and, and just to note, I do appreciate seeing this process and realizing how vigilant this committee is with how taxpayer money is spent. I certainly appreciate that as a taxpayer of Alton. However, I am also concerned about making sound investments, and I feel that this is a sound investment, not only because of having two children that will hopefully still be there when this facility is renovated, but also as someone who plans to stay in Alton, who wants to see businesses attracted to Alton. I've only lived here for six years, and I've seen more businesses close on Main Street than I have seen open. I feel that having a school facility that would be a plus, that would be a positive for this community, and draw additional population, draw businesses here. I'm a private educator for a nonprofit organization based in Rochester, and I travel throughout northern New England doing programs in schools. So, I would say in the last eighteen months of being employed there, I've probably been to thirty different schools, and with very small exception, there isn't a building that I walk into that says, boy, this facility is a lot nicer than where my kids go. Now, that doesn't necessarily translate to a better education, but the perception of comfort, of feeling like it's a welcome place, feeling that it's a adequately climate-controlled place, that I can be up there in front of a group of kids, presenting to two or three hundred kids, and not be sweating, or not be freezing, is a big deal. And when I hear that my kids come home, and they're like, it was really hot in there, it was really cold in there, and I'm like, why are you thinking about that, instead of thinking about what you should be thinking about when you go to school? So, I hope that you'll take into consideration that, yes, it's great for the kids, but it's also going to be a great asset to the community when you're making your recommendation tonight.
Well, to me, for a four or six-person larger enrollment than what we had in eighty-eight, I hope that this fails, because I don't believe that we need another brand-new building down there for eighteen million dollars. I mean, I think it's, it's crazy to build another brand-new school.
It's not a brand-new school.
Even renovate it.
Just a renovation.
I mean, you're talking, you're talking six more student enrollment than we had in eighty-eight.
Virgil, let the public put their input in, we don't need to give the public back input.
Just to address that, and speaking as a Buildings and Grounds Committee member, a majority of the, of the project expenses are going towards renovating that existing facility. There is, there will be, is it three or five classrooms that will, three classrooms?
Five left, reused at the time.
Five will be left unfinished, out of this entire project.
For a six-student enlargement?
There will be five classrooms that will not be utilized at this time, but when I think about how different education is now from when I was a kid, the expanses and just the types of programs that are offered and the additional space that's required for those programs, it's very likely that even without an increase in student population, those classrooms will be utilized within five years, say. So, the other trend that I find interesting is that if you look at the US Census data, Alton is one of the few Lake Region communities that, in the last ten years, despite the economic downturn, and despite the last couple of years where this maybe has not been the case, but in ten years, there has been overall growth in Alton. It's an attractive place to live, it's a place that people will return to, or come here from outside regions. I, like I said, I've only been here for six years, I spent most of my life in Philadelphia, I spent a few years in Maine, and a couple in California. I'm here to stay, and I think that that's, when people can afford to come back, when people can afford to private property, I look around where I live now, and there's roughly like twenty-six or twenty-nine vacant, approved subdivision lots that don't have houses on them yet. You think those twenty-nine houses get built, how many kids is that? And that's only in a very small section of Alton. Pardon?
Could be none.
It could be done. And right now, we have five extra classrooms to accommodate those kids.
Yeah, but it could be, none of them have kids.
It could be.
Don't know.
Hi.
I mean, I'm done, unless somebody has any rebuttals that I'm...
Okay, thanks, no, 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 that's good. There are more?
Again, I'm Rebecca McKeller. From what I understand it, when I was at the school board meeting yesterday, that sixty to eighty percent of this budget is for renovations that need to be done regardless. So, I don't see that putting in a little extra money to make sure that we have room for a population growth that is most likely going to happen, given our proximity to Concord, Manchester, that we're on the lake, this is, I moved here three years ago, because this is a desirable community to live in, and I tell people about how much I love Alton every time I hear somebody who's looking to buy a house, because this is a desirable community to live in. Fiddleheads, the business that just moved here, recognizes that Alton is a desirable community to live in. People are going to come as the economy improves. It's, it's a no-brainer. And we need to have, be proactive and have a school ready to accommodate these children, because I don't want to see my children in class sizes of thirty, because we didn't approve this.
My name is Andy McLeod, I also have children in this school, and a spouse who works in the school, just to let you know. When I, when I, I went to the committee meeting, the school board committee meeting last night, and I saw this whole thing, and I'm starting to get into it, it's new to me, so bear with me. But when I saw it tonight, what I see tonight is, is the Budget Committee was upset because of the lack of representation of the school board, and therefore, they voted, preliminary voted against this article. Am I correct in that?
We couldn't vote, we didn't have answers to the questions for the numbers, we couldn't vote.
Good, thank you. But tonight, as soon as that was said, you all sat back, and as far as I can see, there's three school board members here, am I right? Why did you not ask them to answer these questions? Ask them these questions that you're concerned about, so we can get this process rolling, they can give you clear and concise answers, and they can do it in a respectful manner?
I could ask why they weren't here when this was presented.
We can, we can run around in circles for years, and have the same answer, and I understand your frustration, and we're all people, and we're imperfect.
Yep.
I know I'm imperfect. But let's, let's get this thing rolling. Do you have questions for them, or do you just, have you just decided, flat-out, no, you don't want to spend the eighteen million dollars?
I've decided.
I already had that.
I'd like to, to add something to the issue that I think deals with the cost, and I know Kathy did some work on this, so I'd like to have her address this, but one of the things that people are always concerned with is, what is the actual impact for them?
What does it translate to in dollars?
What's it going to do?
Per year, in my taxes.
In my bill.
Maybe you should put this in, like, the paper.
We will, we will. And, and we are going to have a lot more information, because people are concerned with each of the issues, and we do have articles coming up, and I do want to thank Steve Renner and his communications committee, and all of the people that have contributed to getting that information out, because people want the information, they need to understand what this project is about, and you've heard that a lot of this project, it's estimated from our architect, that it's sixty-five percent of this project will renovate what we need in this building, the HVAC, the windows, the bathrooms, the things that just need to be done, not for growth, but for improvement of that building, to make it safer, to make it healthier, to make it just the way it should be for these kids. But people do want also to know, I'm paying a tax bill now, what's it going to be like for me in the most expensive year for me? Year one, when that bill comes out, we're only paying interest in year one, because we'll sell the bond, we pay interest before we make a principal payment. Year two will be the most expensive year. If we sell that bond this year, you will not see an increase, you will see a decrease. But then year two, which will be two thousand fourteen, FY two thousand fourteen, there will be an increase in your taxes. That's after we retire the Prospect Mountain bond, but because you've been paying that Prospect Mountain bond, it was a ten-year bond, we are now going to be doing a twenty-year bond. But because we're retiring the Prospect Mountain bond, which this year is sixty-eight cents, we'll be selling that other bond, and you can see on that paper, it's a dollar eleven?
Dollar thirty-five, is that per a thousand?
We're talking just, I'm talking right now at the Warren article you have in front of you.
And if you, Virgil, if you flip that sheet over, it shows you what the change is, but not the...
So, Kathy did some calculations on some different houses in this town, and I'll let her take it over from here, if you would actually pay that.
I don't want to interrupt, I'm sorry, I don't want to interrupt on Andy, because Andy was doing public input, but I do have some very, very important information on tax impact, and what it equates to dollar amounts.
Well, let me ask you a question.
Two fourteen...
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Virgil, let Andy finish.
I, I'm sorry, I didn't interrupt Andy.
Are the, is this the questions, are these the questions that we've been waiting for, or are there more? Steve, you're shaking your head.
This, this isn't, this isn't the venue fart, venue fart is in the workshop or the meeting that's after this, it's not, it's not at the public hearing. The public hearing is to state what we've, what we've determined so far, and get public input, and then we have a discussion, okay, and then it could be public input after that, and then we vote.
But I think the public wants this information.
I have no problem presenting this information. Does anybody else on the board have a problem?
But I don't, Andy, I'm sorry, I did interrupt.
Well, yeah, I got derailed.
I don't have a problem with the presentation.